All right, and we're back live. Thanks so much for your patience, you guys. We're still working through things, but we're back. So thanks for rejoining.
All right, so what we're gonna do is basically, I'm gonna go ahead and keep going, and if there's questions that came through the Microsoft forum, we might get those later, but basically, we're learning new things about Microsoft Teams. And honestly, I wouldn't be surprised if Microsoft Teams just changed things over the summer. I only say that because I know Microsoft changes things without telling our IT department that the rollout is new. So what I am gonna go ahead and do is chit chat a little bit about things, some topics from the exam. So in general, your exam covers Chapter 2, Chapter 3, and Chapter 4, though not all of Chapter 4, also not all of Chapter 2. So in Chapter 2, this is mostly dealing with things like the experiments, which actually, speaking of the experiments, hanging out in the course homepage of the 701 section, oftentimes, I get requests for those experiments. This Chapter 2 videos, please go through, okay, good. It's like, what is it gonna do this time? Because it usually takes me to Teams, but I'm already in Teams. What this usually does, what these are, is these are videos of actually me explaining those experiments. Because these videos, they are old, so every once in a while, if you hear me mention something about on your exam, realize that that was for those lovely Fall '21 students, which are two years ago now. We've changed a couple of things since then. But there are videos that will talk through the various experiments and what all of those did, which, as you're watching me do, you would need to log into see those, so we just won't worry about that. But those were supposed to be the old videos, the old videos from the course homepage of the 701 section. And a bunch of things are already posted. And these are just essentially leftovers from when we were during lockdown. But the content still works, still very nice. Chapter 2 also had things with protons, neutrons, and electrons. So there were stuff in there that may have been new to you, may not have been new to you, but we will ask you questions about isotopes. We'll ask you questions about average atomic mass, all of that good stuff, grams to moles conversions to atoms. I'm just gonna put "and more" down here at the bottom, because I am the person that if you ask me on a random day to name seven of Snow White's dwarves, I will confidently name six and never remember the last one. And if you ask me the next day, I will name a different six and have remembered one more and forgotten a different one. So we're just gonna assume that there is something I forgot in that list. Chapter 3, there's a variety of different things in here. This is where we get into a lot of our ideas of light. And so this is sometimes where some of the more calculations, there's dimensional analysis hanging out in Chapter 2 with grams and moles and atoms. Chapter 3 is gonna involve light, so things having to deal with Bohr and orbits, where Bohr thought that electrons orbited the nucleus like planets orbit the sun, which is wrong. But he did get the part right about energy levels. So good on energy levels. And then we came along where we had Schrodinger, and Schrodinger put basically the wave plus the particle part of an electron together and got the Schrodinger equation, which we will also sometimes refer to as the wave function. But that's then where we're gonna wind up with things like quantum numbers, as well as a bunch of the shapes. So what we'll likely do is take a look at some quantum number things as well. Then, Chapter 4. Now, we're not gonna do all of Chapter 4 for this exam. We will finish it out. So just because Chapter 4, we're not doing all of it for this exam, we will do all of it eventually. We're just gonna do some of it. I'm grabbing the syllabus because I don't remember what the sections are called. I just remember that your exam is gonna have only neutral atoms on it. I'll write that down, too. Oh, there it was. So this is your syllabus. Exam 1, 2, 3, 4.1 to 4.5. This, by the way, it's the majority of Chapter 4. 4.1 to 4.5. For the most part, only neutral atoms. Kind of the exception is gonna be ionization energy, which we can also talk about, and electron affinity. Some other things. Oh, electron configuration's also in here. Electron configuration. So with so many various things we could talk about, what I'm actually gonna do is I'm gonna do an example of an average atomic mass question, just because oftentimes, those are the ones that folks have forgotten that we've done by this point in the semester. So the question's gonna go something like this. Sample of this. I always forget which movie it is that deals with unobtanium, but there's unobtanium. And I'm just using round percentages. It's 90%. 298 UN with a mass of 297.99 AMUs. I'll blow this up larger in just a moment. And 10% just for UN dot 299. The atomic mass should come after, not before. 298.87. What is the average atomic mass example? Bigger. That's better. Don't know why one of my numbers is on two lines. There we go. So what we are gonna do for this question is, the goal is the average atomic mass. When we want that, we don't want, we need a weighted average. So that is assumed in there, because we need to take into account the fact that one of these is 90%, and one of these is 10%. So we do need to use those numbers. So in doing that, what we're gonna use is, we're gonna use 90%, but as a decimal, so 0.9 times the mass of that particular isotope. And remember, just because it's the most abundant of that isotope, it still counts as an isotope of unobtanium, even if it's the one that we have the most of. I usually tell my classes that even vanilla counts as a flavor of ice cream, so I don't care if it's the most common flavor that we've got. It still counts as a flavor of ice cream. And we're also taking the 10% as point 1. So using the percentage as a decimal in its place. And I should have put the AMUs in there, times the mass of that. So all we're really doing is we're taking into account the contribution of each isotope. So that's one of the things that this does, is keeps in mind the relative abundance. One of these is 90%, one of these is 10%, and we wanna make sure that we use that information. So here's my 268.191 AMUs plus 29.887 AMUs for a grand total of 298.078. And we don't need all of those digits. For most things on our exam, we're gonna wind up probably the same number that we started with here, so we'll just round this to 298.08 AMUs. One thing we can do to double check is, since 90% was this 297.99 or very close to 298 number, my value here should be close to 298. So since most of my sample was 298, my number should be closer to 298 than it is to 299. And this is just one of those to kind of think through. Most of it is one number, so most of it should be close, or the final answer should therefore be close to that value. So it's just kind of that refresher on how to deal with weighted average. So again, mostly use something to remind yourself of how to do this one, because oftentimes, folks forget that we did this, because it's so far back in the semester by now. So go ahead and ask, do we have any questions either from things that were submitted prior or submitted recently?
The Q&amp;A box has magically appeared, so there are some questions. Yes.
Well, wonders never cease. Excellent. What do we have then?
So Dr. Taylor, the first question we have, we have in total three questions from two different persons. So the first one is, what's the difference between paramagnetic and diamagnetic?
Great. What else?
This is a question from a same person. Also, can we work on question 30 from last year's exam? And the last one is starting from the slides and reviewing Alex's efficient. Also, do the slides cover the topics and the contents asked in the exams?
Great. Okay.
That's all we have. Oh, we have new ones.
Okay.
Can we go over ionization energies?
Okay.
And the last one, what are the exceptions elements in electron configuration? And how do we write electron configuration for them?
Great.
Well, we have, seems like we have two more coming.
Okay.
So how do we find the end of chapter questions? Whenever I open it, it just shows numbers, but where do I find the actual questions?
Okay.
The last one is, how do you calculate percent abundance of each isotope?
Got it. I also came for one of those. Perfect. So even if there's more questions popping up, this is enough for me to talk for a little while. So super glad that the Q&amp;A is back, and I'm gonna go ahead and answer at least some of these seven questions, now that I have questions to work off of. So thank you. That was great. That's great. Glad it's, glad it's magically appeared. Also, while it has been a little while since this happened, the first year that we were in doing everything all online, Fall '20, Dr. Deekman, so I would do exam reviews of the Living Learning Community, and y'all did all my tech work for me, and that was amazing. Dr. Deekman's exam review, I did his tech work for him, because when you're doing the exam review, it's nice to have to not be in charge of everything. We did that through Blackboard Collaborate, and we just got used to the fact that it would kick everybody out at least once, for some reason we could never figure out. We tried real hard. Occasionally, we figured out why. But we dropped everybody off the call like every time. So I'm like, oh, look, Microsoft Teams is the same problem. Okay, so I am gonna answer these the fastest way. So finding the end of chapter questions. So when you go to look at the end of chapter questions in the actual folder, did I copy this over for my, yes, I did, end of chapter questions and keys. This is only gonna be a list of what they are. So yes, when you click on this, the only thing you actually get is you just get numbers. That's because the next thing you actually need to do is go to Alex and go to the ebook, or go to the physical book. I left mine at work. Of course I did. I left mine on campus. So in Alex, there is a place where that actually just says end of, end of chapter, end of whatever. And so those end of chapter questions are actually in the textbook themselves. So that's where you need to look. I am gonna pull that up ever so briefly, because it's not always the easiest thing to find. We do have various things to try to help y'all guide your way through Alex, but even I understand that that's a little bit weird. So where I am is, let's say we wanted them for Chapter 3. So here's, here's my ebook, here's my Chapter 3, and what I can do is I'm gonna scroll all the way down to questions and problems. So I'm gonna scroll all the way down to questions and problems. Wherever I am now is where I wanna be. So the so whatever my end of chapter questions is, when it said Chapter 3, now I am in Chapter 3, so I was a 3 first. So number 1 is 3.1, number 11 is 3.11, number 16 is 3.16. So finding the end of chapter questions, always a good question. They are hanging out, and I'm using the ebook, because, well, one, I left the paper copy on my desk, and two, it's usually easier just to show you guys with a big screen anyway. But that's how those work. So that was nice and easy. So that one's done. The other one, I can, I'm actually gonna mention, everybody is always welcome to tell me about a question you would like me to work from the old exam. I will always do those in a follow-up video. And here's why. I really like people to be able to look at last fall's exam with fresh eyes and try to do the exam with 80 minutes. So you can try to go ahead and take the Fall '22 exam with an 80-minute timer and see how you do. So I personally don't like to do old exam questions in the live part, because that way, if someone hasn't gotten to take a look at it yet, it spoils it for them. But I will make a follow-up video, and I'll do it separately, and I'll give it to the Living Learning Community. It'll be either part of it or a separate video. I don't know which one. But I will do it, just not live. So you're always welcome to recommend this. I'm gonna keep this list, and I will do that one later. Studying slides in the Alex enough. So here's, so the deal with Alex is this is not all the ways we can ask questions. So one of the things that's always difficult about Alex is when we go to write the exam, four different people write your exam. It's me and Dr. Deekman, and Dr. Ashami, and Dr. Wong. The four of us all write exam questions. We don't write questions like Alex writes questions. We don't write questions like the end of chapter questions either, unless you copy them. I only copied one, but I copied one. So Alex is helpful, but the end of chapter questions are also helpful. The Fall '22 exam is also helpful. SI is also helpful. Anything that will let you look at questions, because one of the other things that happens is, when you study slides, a lot of times, when you read when you read material, this is typically a passive form of studying. And when you do that, you're like, oh, well, this sentence makes complete sense. This picture makes a lot of sense. This is all fine. Then when you're on the exam, and you have to figure out which one of these is a little bit off, or you have to try to put things into different words, things can become a little bit more complicated. So I'm always gonna recommend studying in different ways. So the more different ways people are studying, the better off you are. And there actually is some interesting research about that, that essentially, the more different things you do, oftentimes, the better. Because as far as like, is that where all of the material is? Yeah, that's where all the material is. Is that enough? Again, the more you can kind of ask yourself questions about the material, the better off you'll be. I'm gonna go ahead and do the percent abundance calculation one, because that's also a Chapter 2 question. This one's not gonna be quite as pretty, as far as me writing it all out. But basically, what this one is, is it's doing a similar calculation to what I did previously, except instead of giving the percentages, we're gonna solve for the percentages. So it's a very similar setup, but we're solving for something different. So a different made-up element, vibranium has an average atomic mass. I'm not using grammar. We're just gonna write this out. Of 310.7 AMUs. It's made of two isotopes, which is 308 BB with a mass of 307.9 AMUs and 312 vibranium, vibranium 312 at 311.8 AMUs. And the question is, what are the percentages? What's the percentage? Question mark, percent sign. So what we're going to do is, similar to the last one, where we did have percentages and the masses being equal to the average, we're gonna have that same general setup. So I'm basically going to have a percent that I don't know. So we're gonna call that X times my 307.9 plus another percentage that I don't know, we're gonna call that Y, times my other mass, be equal to the average atomic mass, which is up here. Now, there's two numbers I don't know and only one equation. That's a problem. This won't work. So we need to have another piece of information, so that we can actually solve for X and Y. And so for those of you that might remember, if you have two variables, you need two equations. There actually is another piece of information that we know, which is that if these were percentages, my percentages would add up to 100. These are decimals, as they are in my equation. X plus Y should equal 1. Because really, what this is, is X times 100% plus Y times 100% should be equal to 1 times 100%. We're just ignoring the 100%, even though we're gonna use that at the very end. And we're going with X plus Y equals 1. It's my personal habit to put things in terms of X, so I'm gonna solve for Y. So Y is equal to 1 minus X, and now I can go ahead and plug this over there. That's very messy. So I'm gonna have X times 307.9 plus 1 minus X times 311.8 equals 310.7. Now I distribute, so I get rid of all my parentheses. 307.9X plus 311.8 by itself minus 311.8X equals 310.7. I'm gonna gather like terms. So I'm gonna gather my Xs together, and I get negative 3.9X. I'm gonna go and subtract both sides to gather my terms by my 311. So that's gonna give me negative 1.1. I'm gonna divide both sides by 3.9. I get negative 3.9. I get X to be equal to 0.28205. I can go ahead and use my equation back there in red to solve for Y. So I've got 0.28205 plus Y is equal to 1. Y therefore should be equal to, I'm not gonna do all my decimals, about 7.18. And now for percentages, I can just multiply both of those by 100. So my 0.28 times 100% becomes 28.2%. And my Y times 100% becomes 71.8%. And we can go back up and double-check again to make sure that the percentages make sense, as far as the one that is larger should be closer to the actual average. So my Y is 71. So my Y is 71.8% and my X is 28.2%. This is about 308-ish. This is about 312. This number here, if I run it up, is closer to 311. So I should have more of my larger isotope, my heavier isotope. I should have more of it. And that's what we have. So those decimal places are at least reflecting that the larger abundance does belong to the correct isotope in there. So hopefully, that helps out with that a bit. So calculating percent abundance, did this one. We're gonna do paramagnetic and diamagnetic, which will actually help us out a lot with exceptions to electron configurations. So somebody asked me about that. Correct table. I think about what I want. Oh, we will start off nice and small. So I'm gonna wanna do some electron configuration, but some orbital notation. Actually, I'll probably do it on this page. So when we do electron configurations, we're actually doing quantum numbers. We're just doing quantum numbers for multiple, we're demonstrating quantum numbers for multiple electrons all at the same time, which is kind of weird. But it's a lot of times what we're doing. So what I'm gonna do is highlight something. So this over here is what we refer to as the S block. This over here, in the middle, is what we refer to as the D block. Gosh, I should write this prettier, but I'm not going to. And over here is what we refer to as the P block. Down here at the bottom, we refer to as the F block. So if I wanted to write the electron configuration, we're gonna start with beryllium. This is gonna have four electrons, so it's got an atomic number of four. What I'm gonna do is, I have to deal with the fact that I need places for four electrons to be. I'm gonna start with 1S. So this is gonna be my N equals 1. And this is gonna be, so this technically is my value of N. S is my value of L. So right now, I have an N equals 1, therefore, I should have an L equals 0, which is S. If L is equal to 0, I only have one option for M sub L, which is also 0. So the fact that I only have one blank here, one line drawn, is my value of M sub L. One orbital. Then I am gonna put in two electrons, because every orbital holds two electrons. So I get two electrons in one orbital. They don't equal. That's a misnomer. They don't equal one orbital, two electrons in an orbital, which essentially, this would represent my value of Ms, of spin being positive one-half and spin down being negative one-half. Now, the idea that the up arrow is positive and the down arrow is negative is actually arbitrary. They just have to be equal and opposite. But it frankly always makes sense to me that up is positive and down is But frankly, always makes sense to me that up is positive and down is negative. So it's a way that I can be consistent and consistency is a good thing. That's two electrons. If I stopped right now, I technically would have helium because I have something where I am representing my two electrons. We're going to beryllium, all the way to the beryllium. 2S. So I'm still in my S block, but now I'm with an N equals 2. I'm going to put in those two electrons and for beryllium, I actually would stop here. If I'm doing electron configuration, typically we would write this as 1S2. Make that prettier. 1S2, 2S2. Where, again, the 1 is my value of N, the 2 is my value of N. These superscripts up here, which yes, are also 2s, are the number of electrons in the subshell. So that is your crash course in electron configuration. As far as diamagnetic and paramagnetic go, which is the question I'm heading for, these have definitions. So I like to think of diamagnetic. Di, meaning two, that essentially for every up, there is a down. All electrons are paired. But I do like to think about this as for every up, there is a down. All electrons are paired. For every up, there is a down. So the other option then is not this. Because you only have two options, either diamagnetic or paramagnetic. Diamagnetic, meaning all electrons are paired. For every up, there is a down. Paramagnetic, not all electrons are paired. Not all of them. So if most of them are paired, great. But if there's even one unpaired electron, that's a paramagnetic element. So even though I know it's relatively messy at this point, beryllium, the one I drew out, that has 1S and 2S and it's got grand total of four electrons. For every up, there is a down, this is diamagnetic. So so beryllium is what we refer to as being diamagnetic because all of the electrons are paired. However, if I went one further, after beryllium comes boron over here, I would have for boron, 1S, 2S. And I could start to write 2P and boron just has one electron in the 2P subshell. Boron is then paramagnetic because it has an unpaired electron. It only has one. The other four are all paired. We don't care. As long as you have one unpaired electron, it's paramagnetic. It could have more unpaired electrons and it would still be paramagnetic. So paramagnetic and diamagnetic are important because there are some interesting things that elements do under certain circumstances. So the big thing being that your diamagnetic elements are actually slightly repelled by an electric field. Slightly repelled. Magnetic fields, sorry, in magnetic field. So there's a really kind of interesting quirk that diamagnetic elements have. So we care about that property essentially. It's a special property of diamagnetic elements. So it's an interesting thing that we actually do use in the real world. But it is, it is either they are all paired or they're not all paired. And that's, that's it. That's diamagnetic and paramagnetic. Sounds really fancy. The main thing to remember is if you're looking for that word connection is the di means two. And that's also why I kind of like the for every up, there is a down for di. Because you can kind of think about them as being my two electrons. If I have an up, where's my down? Di means two. So while I almost never succeed, in the back of my head, I really like to take questions about every half an hour. I very rarely succeed in actually doing that, but let's pretend that we've succeeded and that we're taking questions about every half hour. So are there more questions that I can at least write down? We'll see how many I get to address.
We have almost 30 questions here.
Well, give me a couple. We'll see how many we get to. I'll stop you at some point. Are there, if you can, also skim through and see if there are any that relate to what I just did. If you can't, otherwise, we'll just, I'll just write them all down.
Most of the questions are a yes, no answer, so that might help. The first one is, do we care about the significant digits standard rules when doing calculations? Or do we just always round to a particular decimal place?
Great. Excellent. No. So the only reason why we care about sigfigs is because if you round too much, then you will get too far off. So take a look at how different the answer choices are. Rounding too early can get your final answer off. But often, if you keep four or five digits, you'll have the same answer. So just, just be wary of rounding a lot because the more calculations you have to do, the farther off your number may get. Okay, what's next?
Can we go over the unit conversation that we need to know?
I'll try. Okay, what's next?
Okay, this is a question many of them asked. This is, could you clarify all the quantum numbers and their restrictions?
Okay.
Can we go over calculating wavelength?
Okay.
Which SI unit do you recommend we memorize? Is PI PICO or PICO through TETRA sufficient or should we memorize more?
Okay. That one's also quick. So I personally recommend basically like 10 to the negative 12 to the positive 12 is basically what I recommend. Because that'll usually get you farther than you need. Oh, that's, that's actually on there. So yeah, you don't, you don't need any farther because we basically are just going to do about, if, if we actually go that lower, that high, but 10 to the negative 12 to 10 to the positive 12 will be plenty. Will be plenty. We may or may not even use all of those, but that'll be plenty. Okay. Others right now?
Is the exam in person or in testing center?
Your exam is in person. Your exam is in person. We don't have the rooms yet, but basically we'll put you to all in rooms according to last name. We'll use those rooms all semester. So I know we don't have those room assignments out to you guys yet. We will have those to you soon. Yeah, y'all won't all fit in a testing center, so we can't use a testing center. There's too many of you guys.
Can we go into more detail about AMUs in relation to moles?
More detail about moles?
AMUs in relation to moles.
Oh, AMUs.
Yeah, AMUs in relation to moles.
Other things?
Could we go over first, second, third ionization energies and how the equations for them look?
Okay.
Can the short answer questions be conceptual too? That is explain why the Bohr model is inaccurate or will it be more calculation based? If conceptual questions are possible, is there a partial grade for that?
Look at the fall 2022 exam. So on the short answer questions, the thing to keep in mind is every instructor is going to grade their section. We are not offloading that responsibility onto anyone else. So I will be grading 400 answers. Dr. Dieckmann will be grading 400 answers. Dr. Wong will be grading 400 answers. Dr. Shami only has one section. She gets to grade 200 answers. So we are not going to ask y'all an essay question about chemistry because no, we're not going to. You can take a look at the fall 2022 exam to see the sorts of rubrics and to see how much of a breakdown we give you. We honestly don't give you guys a big breakdown when you take the exam. We'll usually tell you how many points the question is worth. And if there are parts to it, we'll tell you how much each part is worth. But looking back at the fall 22 exam is going to be the biggest help for you. But just, just keep in mind that whatever we ask you, we have to grade 200 to 400 times. So some of those short answer questions still have to be relatively concise for us to be able to grade them in an amount of time that makes sense. So just, that's just a logistic thing when, when you think about how we're going to pull this off. Okay. Other questions from the chat so far?
So did with the Plumb-Brading model and Goldwall experiment, why did the thing of our particles would just go straight to the atom? Did you think all of the stuff of the atom was nothing?
Okay. Okay. I backed up a little bit to that one. What else?
All right. Will we need to know the specific axes that the quantum numbers are on?
The specific what?
Axes, ax, yes?
Oh, yes, I understand. Yes. Yes, I understand what you have. Got it, got it, got it. Yeah. Yes, that for, yes, you, you gave the question perfectly fine. It just took me a minute because I think of the axes as being something that's associated with a shape and the quantum numbers as being numbers. So it took my brain a minute to be like, what are they asking? Oh, I get it. I get it. So no, you, you did that perfectly. You did that perfectly. That was, that was a me, that was a me problem, not a you problem.
A problem. So will we need to know Rydberg's equation and the electrostatic equation? I'm an accounting student. These are like Charbonne for me.
Okay. No, you're doing great. Okay. This is plenty of questions for me right now. Let me go ahead and answer at least some of these. So I'm going to stop you right there. Okay. So as far as knowing your equations, you have an equation sheet. So we are going to ask you guys questions that you can do with that equation sheet. So that is hanging out in the 701 section. So as far as what you need to know. Now granted, I absolutely did a like N equals 2 to N equals 1 and give me the wavelength of that transition from these equations. So granted, I always do it the way that I did it on Friday, but I absolutely use these guy, these equations to do what the Rydberg equation usually does. So we don't teach the Rydberg equation, so we don't use the Rydberg equation. We do use the Bohr equation though. So we do use this guy. We do use the Bohr equation on there. But that's given. So equation sheet. Okay, as far as knowing the axes for the quantum number shapes, my personal assumption is that it would make sense that if I have something where this is my x-axis and this is my y-axis and I'm talking about PX, that PX is on the x-axis. So I'm actually going to say yes to this one because if this is Y and this is X and we want to talk about PY, it's on the y-axis. I realize the ones for D are more complicated, but a lot of them are still describing the plane they are in. So when you look at those shapes and those axes, that typically just describes where they are. So if you have an axis drawn for you, that it's just describing where it is. So you don't necessarily need to memorize what they are because when looking at a coordinate, it should make sense where it belongs. Okay. For the person who wants more detail about AMUs in relation to moles, I will try to answer this in the video afterwards, but I bet you've got a really specific question or confusion that you probably need to talk to me back and forth about, but we're going to try. Unit conversions you need to know. This is really just your metric prefixes. So the, the unit conversions you need to know are your metric prefixes. And that, again, I'm going to go with the 10 to the negative 12th all the way to 10 to the positive 12th. Your textbook has this. Where is it? I thought it was in the front matter of your textbook. Is this some useful tables? Would I find these tables useful? Oh, Burgen over B. There we go. Look at that. These. So yeah, the SI prefix is out of your textbook. This is what I think is useful. So if you happen to know more than this, fabulous, but honestly, these are all the ones we would ever use. Still don't know why Desi is in there, but you know what? It's fine. We'll just, oh, come back. Just take the U over there. There we go. So 10 to the negative 12th to the positive 12th, Pico to Terra. Those are the ones you need to memorize. Those. Any other conversions? The only other thing that I sometimes think people think of as, so in a complete sentence, the other thing sometimes people forget is the fact that 1 over a second is the same as a per second is the same as a Hertz. That's not actually a conversion. That's a definition. A Hertz is a per second, which can either be written as a fraction or it can be written with this negative exponent notation. So sometimes people think that this is a conversion. And so sometimes they expect to see it on that potentially useful information page and then they're disappointed. But this is actually a definition. A Hertz is an inverse second or a per second. And there's just different ways that you can write that information. So these are things that we would expect you to have memorized. Memorize. If you don't already, boom, memorize. Yeah, so we looked at the potentially useful information page. So that is helpful on there. Okay, I answered the sigfig question. I answered unit conversion questions. I answered this one, I answered that one, answered this, and this, and this. Yay! Okay, um, so, um, our fabulous Proctor, by the way, I really love the fact that there are people that will read me those questions. Um, I really, really appreciate that we have people who do that. Um, because that way they can tell me things like, we got this one a lot. Um, so that way I already know that, now I have to skip through them. Uh, all quantum numbers. So here we go. So this is the part where there's usually something I forget in all of this. We'll see if I can do it. Uh, N, which is the principal quantum number. We're just gonna abbreviate that QN for quantum number, because they're all gonna say QN, quantum number. Um, this one starts at one um, and goes to infinity. These are counting numbers, so this is one, two, three, four, five. We are also gonna refer to N as the shell. We are also going to refer to N as the size as when you're talking about these, the larger your value, the farther away you are, farther electron is from the nucleus. So that's N. It basically has no restrictions aside from the fact that it's gonna be a whole number and it's not zero. N can also be found on the periodic table. By the way, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, these are your, basically your values of N. Ah. Next up, L. This is your angular momentum quantum number. L has some restrictions because L is gonna start at zero and go all the way to N minus one. So if N, gotta pick a different N value, what do I want N to be equal to? Hmm, four. That means I have an L equal to zero and I have an L equal to one and I have an L equal to two and I have an L equal to three. So when it, uh, N is equal to four, I actually have four values of L. Zero, one, two, and three. Speaking of values of L, um, we are also gonna refer to these as subshells. So therefore I can say statements like in the N equals four shell, I expect there to be four subshells. That being S, P, D, and F. Because it's not enough that all of those are letters, they're, that all of those are numbers, they're letters too. So that's what we were actually looking at when I gave the colors of the periodic table over here and said this is also your F block and also your P block and your D block and your F block. So already we've got quantum number N and quantum number L represented on the periodic table. They're right here. So they are actually hanging out in the organization of your periodic table. Feel like there's something else important about this shape. This is the reason why I have PowerPoint slides, by the way. I understand some people can probably just go about it without it. This is a dumbbell shape. I know it looks like a figure eight, but it's supposed to be in three dimensions, so it's a dumbbell. I did not name that, that's what they call it. Uh, D is a clover leaf or the figure eight with donut. Oh, that was a bad, bad, bad one. Uh, F is complicated. So I was showing my class, I certainly like these. Um, there's an orbitron website where a group that actually does, um, a lot of the quantum mechanics for all of this have these shapes. Um, and so sometimes I just like to look at them because they're a better representation than what I drew. Um, so there's your dumbbell shape. Um, here's your different clover leaf shapes and the figure eight with the donut that I was trying to draw. Um, so the way that these actually work, by the way, which I forgot to do in my classes, is uh, there's what that we call nodes. So you basically have a sphere which has zero nodes, no nodes. And the dumbbell shape is actually created because you have a sphere and you have a place where there is a node, which means there is no electron density. So when we look at the orbitron pictures, these are a little bit easier to see because you actually have places where there's no electron density and you can kinda see these better that if that line running through the middle wasn't there, these look kind of spherical. So it's kinda like if you took a, took a, a sphere and squished it in the middle. Um, and that's, these are lighter colors now of gray in there, those are the nodes. So there's basically a planar node that splits all of your P orbitals in half. When it comes to D, you have not one planar node but two planar nodes. So except for one of them, that looks weird. Um, so for D, you get the clover leaf shape because you basically took a sphere and you cut it in half twice. So there's two planar nodes. The figure eight with the donut though, you're still dealing with a sphere, but they're not planar nodes, they're cones. They're conical nodes. So you have electron density that goes up through the middle where my little curly Q is, down the bottom where the curly Q is, that's your figure eight shape. And whatever's left on the sides is the donut thing that goes around the middle. Um, so those are, there's my nodes. Um, so these are the conical nodes that make that shape. These are the two planar nodes. They're difficult to see, but that's what those are. Um, that make up those shapes. So that's how we get them. Next up, uh, M sub L, the magnetic quantum number. It's based on L. Uh, M sub L goes from negative L all the way to zero, all the way to positive L, which means that when L equals two, that means M sub L is equal to negative two and negative one and zero and positive one and positive two. Usually what we want out of M sub L is we just wanna know how many of them there are. So oftentimes the question is how many values of, how many values of M sub L are there? And you can count them up, um, when L equals two and then you get a grand total of five. But there's also this little equation that sometimes people like to have memorized uh, where it's equal to two L plus one, so two times two plus one is also five. Um, M sub L actually gives you orientation. Um, it's uh, orientation. So when we were looking at, we're doing L equals two, um, coming back around here. Here's an orientation in space, here's an orientation in space. Here we flipped it up, here we twisted it to the side, here we have conical nodes. So it's like an orientation in space, except we just, we, we sliced it completely differently. Um, so those are that idea of orientation. Same game with P. Uh, when L is equal to one, I should have three values of M sub L and I have one that goes along the x-axis, one that goes along the y-axis and one that goes along the x-axis. So I have three, um, P orbitals that look like that. Oh, and we call them orbitals. Um, so we call values of N shells, values of L subshells, values of M sub L, we call orbitals. Not orbits, orbitals. This thing is how we can start to build our electron configuration in our orbital notation. So we have one S, two S, two P. Just these. These are actually quantum numbers reflected. So this is my value of N. So I have an N equals one, when N is equal to one, I have a value of L equals zero. It can't have anymore because zero is as low as it goes and L can only go to N minus one. One minus one is zero, so that's the only L value I have. When L is equal to zero, we often refer to it just by its letter. So L being equal to zero is our S subshell. Then, because L is equal to zero, I have an M sub L value that goes from negative L to zero to positive L. L's equal to zero, I only have one value of M sub L, which is zero, which is therefore reflected in the fact I have one blank right there. For two, when N is equal to two, I have two values of L. I have an L equals zero and I have an L equals one. Means I should have an L equals zero, I should have an S, which I do. When L is equal to zero, I have one value of M sub L, which is zero, which is why the two S subshell only has one blank. There's only one orbital in the two S subshell. Then, when I go to the two P, I'm trying to talk about the fact that when N equals two, L equals one and when L equals one, then I have M sub L values of negative one, zero, and positive one, which is why, I kinda drew it sloppily, um, but there are three blanks up here. So I have three values of M sub L and I have three blanks for my P orbitals. So the two P subshell has three orbitals in it, three being represented by my values of M sub L. Last quantum number is spin. M sub S, you only have two options, either plus one half or minus one half. Spin, um. Up arrows, down arrows, that's all we got. Uh. Spin is essentially as if your electrons were either uh, spinning in place. That's why it's called spin and so it's as if they're either spinning clockwise or counterclockwise. How we get that. Uh, maybe it's do the same thing. So those are the only options for spin. Either positive one half or minus one half, that's, that's it. Um, so the nice thing is, is that they can get a bit intense uh, as they continue uh, since they do build on each other and then suddenly M sub S comes along and M sub S is just positive one half or minus one half and that's, that's all, that's it for M sub S. Um, now in my electron configuration, in my orbital notation that I'm drawing out here, um, I did do a couple of things specifically. So everything I put in here is actually in there for a reason. So I did a couple of things, like I started with one S and I moved up from there. Uh, so starting low and going high is what we refer to as the alpha principle. This literally means buildup. It's not someone's name. Um, so this basically means that you start at lowest energy subshell and completely fill the subshell before moving on. So that's the reason why I didn't go into the third, um, I don't, I don't have the electrons anywhere random. They start low, they go high. It's not just for organizational thing, that's the alpha principle. Um, I should also say these are ground state atoms. Uh, that's the other reason why this works, is for these for the ground state. The other thing that I did, uh, and this actually goes more with quantum numbers than it does with the orbital notation. I usually cover it with orbital notation, is you might notice the fact that I have one up and one down. For one up and one down, this is what we refer to as the polyexclusion principle, where every electron has a unique set of quantum numbers. So every single electron in an atom does have a unique set of quantum numbers. Full, full stop, end of story. Um, so no matter what, every electron has a unique set of quantum numbers. Um, and you do, you reflect that pretty in whenever you do orbital notation, when you have electrons where one is up and one is down. It's not just pretty, it's actually the polyexclusion principle. The last thing that I did in this set, and she might have noticed, is all three of these are all up. That is called Hund's rule. And Hund's rule just states that we maximize spin. Max, max, come on, spelling, I can do this. Maximize, maximize. Uh, we maximize spin. Now technically, I did have one other option if I just wanted to do those three. If I really wanted to, I also actually could have drawn them all down. Uh, this is that part, remember, where when I said, hey, we're gonna go ahead and say that all the up arrows are positive one half and all the down arrows are minus one half? Because that makes our lives easier to pretend like that's real. Um, that part is a my choice thing, which means as long as all the spins are the same, until they have to be different, um, they're fine. So you maximize spin, which means whether you pick up arrows or down arrows, as you start to fill in a subshell, you do them all the same. Um, so we maximize spin either all up or all down until you have to pair them. You have to pair them because of the polyexclusion principle. Now I will say, one of our favorite exam questions is to ask you which of the following breaks a rule, but we'll pick. I will be like, which of the following breaks the polyexclusion principle? Um, and the thing is, is it's that it doesn't break Hund's rule. It'll break the polyexclusion principle. Here's what I mean by that. So if the goal is to find things that break rules, uh, I'm just gonna do uh, uh, yeah, I'm just gonna do one S, two S. Um, so like I can do this guy. Um, and this guy, because I have this blank right here where I really should have filled in before I moved on, um, this essentially breaks the alpha principle. I can also have something that looks like this, one S, two S. Two do 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 do, sorry. Some bad up arrows, they're supposed to be all up arrows. Um, this breaks the polyexclusion principle. But that's the only one I broke, believe it or not. Um, because all the spins are up. This is great according to Hund's rule. It's not allowed because of the polyexclusion principle. So one of the things that might be new for you, this all might be new, I didn't get to this on Friday. Um, but what might be new for you is you need to not just know how to do orbital notation, which orbital notation takes all three of these into account. You need to know what each one of them is individually. Um, because we will often ask you to tell us information about one of the rules individually. Um, not just can you utilize all three of them together? So we did quantum numbers. We've done a fair amount with electron configuration. Still haven't answered the exceptions to electron configuration. But at least we call, clarified all the quantum numbers and their restrictions. Yay! Um, let's do ionization energy. So I think I can do that one halfway okay, even in the small amount of time I've got left. Okay. So, um, mostly because there was a couple of questions on ionization energy. So my version of So my version of the periodic table, when I just want to draw a quick one, I refer to this as a lopsided castle, because it got like a little sticky thing over here that's small, but a sticky thing up here that's larger, stuff in the middle. So we're gonna have periodic trends that, and for ionization energy, the definition of ionization energy, oh, we are absolutely typing this out, hold on one moment, please. I had all of these things about me that I tried to keep hidden from my colleagues especially. And then during lockdown, they found out a lot of things that I wish that they didn't know, like the fact that I type relatively quickly. Ionization energy defined as the amount of energy required to remove an electron from an atom in its ground state. Oh, to remove an electron from a gaseous atom. Gaseous atom. And I should actually say this is the first ionization energy. So here's the deal. We've got atoms, they have electrons, we're gonna rip them away. They don't always like that, by the way. So when we perhaps have, let's just go with neons over here. Neon, fluorine, nitrogen, oxygen, carbon. Did I do that right? You do not have the periodic table memorized. Ah, did I flip oxygen and nitrogen? I did, did. Oops, I fix this. Don't do that. This is why we give you a periodic table on the exam. Carbon, nitrogen, oxygen, fluorine. So as we think about this, if I have neon hanging out with 1S, 2S, 2P, in order to do the first ionization energy of neon, I am going to take away an electron. That's gonna leave me with a positive charge on neon. Because what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna remove 1 electron from neon. So it's gonna leave me behind with a positive charge on neon. So we can also talk about ionization energy and what the equation for that looks like. Since something is removed, so basically this thing with the arrow is what I like to think of as a chemical sentence or a chemical story. This is the beginning. This is the ending. So we started off with neon, neutral, and its ground state. We ended by taking away an electron, so this electron's now separate. And we have whatever is left over from neon after the electron's gone. So this neon is now positive. In general, neon, because it had all of these beautiful full sub shells, neon's actually very, very stable. Neon very much wants to keep all of its electrons. Taking away an electron from neon, actually really difficult. It's gonna be easier to take it away from fluorine and oxygen and all of these. So in general, ionization energy increases increases from left to right across the periodic table. Because in general, the closer you get to the noble gases, the more energy is required to remove an electron. The more energy that's required, the greater your ionization energy. And a lot of times, we'll just mix first ionization energy with ionization energy, because oftentimes, the first one is the one that we're discussing. So in general, ionization energy increases as you go from left to right. In general, it also increases from bottom to top. So it also increases as you're at the top. So actually helium, I didn't draw on here. Helium actually would should have our highest ionization energy of anything. Whatever is way down here should have the lowest ionization energy of anything. As far as why the bottom has lower ionization energy, if you'll remember back to our quantum numbers, where the greater our value of n, the farther away that electron is from the nucleus. That means the farther away the electron is from the positive charge of the nucleus. So the greater your value of n, the less of a hold that nucleus has on those outermost electrons. So it requires less energy to take an electron away from a greater value of n, because those electrons are being, are farther away from the positive charge of the nucleus. So ionization energy increases from left to right, increases from bottom to top. Someone else asked about first, second, and third. So I mentioned that this is the equation for first ionization energy. The only thing that you have to know when we're doing second and third is these are like sequels. It's like a trilogy. We pick up where we left off. So since the ending of the first ionization energy was this neon with a positive charge, our second ionization energy is gonna pick up with that with that particular thing, with that ion. Which means that then when we remove an electron, which we're still gonna remove 1 electron, this is a sequel. Whatever we did in the first one was really cool. We're gonna repeat the same formula. So we're removing an electron, but because we did that, our neon now is gonna have a positive 2 charge, because we removed another electron. So when we started, we were neutral. We removed an electron, we got something that was positive. We're gonna take whatever that thing was from the first one in our sequel, do it again. Which means, you might have guessed it, for our third ionization energy, we take whatever we started with, whatever we were left with in our second ionization energy, and that's where we begin. We remove an electron again to get our third ionization energy. We end with a positive 3 charge. So when you do subsequent ionization energies, you are still removing 1 electron at a time. So in our definitions, ionization energies are always about removing the next electron. So it's not the same as the energy required to remove 3 of them all at the same time. I know that that seems like a really specific definition, but this is also useful, because then we can compare. So how much effort did it take to remove that 1 electron? How much effort did it take to remove the next electron? It's easier and better for us to use in comparison strategies. There's actually an Alex topic on this that will use a bunch of bar graphs that will hopefully help with this idea. Because it's got a lot of things that have to do with first, second, third ionization energy. I forget if that one's a module or a homework, but it's coming up in the next week. So that's some information about ionization energy. Where'd my list go? Okay, so we at least did second, third, fourth. Second, third, we did that. And we did ionization energy. No, I'm not done. So in the amount of time I have left, let's go ahead and take another round of questions and see where we are. Do we have any new questions? Yeah.
So we don't have any new questions, but there are some left from the previous session.
Oh, great. Sure, they're new to me.
How do we know which element has the smallest and largest atomic radius?
Okay.
And also, can we please go over the number 14, 23, 24, 26, 28 from the 2022 exam?
Guys, sorry, I got so startled that there was more than 1 number. I stopped.
So there are like 5 questions.
Okay.
14, 23, 24,
24.
26 and 28.
28, okay.
From 2022 exam.
Yeah.
What is covered during SI or SL sessions? The SI or SL?
It's SI, got it. Okay, other things. What else is in there?
Do we have to memorize the element names, symbols?
I can handle that one, alright, what else?
The periodic table that is given to us on the exam does not have the names of the elements. It only has the symbol. So will we need to know which element name corresponds to each symbol on the table? For instance, do we need to have, we need to have to memorize that SB is antimony?
Okay. I sense a long meeting coming up. Yeah, I'll address that in a minute. Other questions right now?
Is there a specific grading criteria for the open-ended exam questions?
Other things?
Can we please go over the elements neutral ground?
Okay.
Should we solve all the EOC chapter or only the ones in the eLearning folder?
Okay.
I think you have answered this one. Do the Alex questions help more for the exam or end of the chapter questions?
Okay. Cool. Anything else in there for now?
Oh, I think this is it.
Okay, cool.
Oh, sorry, there's one. Is the 1S energy level have less energy than the 2S?
Excellent. Okay, excellent. Great, thank you. Okay. So as far as concerns about memorizing element names and symbols, I will have a meeting with Dr. Deekman and Dr. Shami and Dr. Wong tomorrow night. We'll have a chat about this. Because part of what happened is I thought that the, I thought that the Alex periodic table already had the names on it. This is what I get for texting Dr. Deekman yesterday instead of going to my email and opening all the folders. Because we're not gonna make you guys memorize a whole bunch of names of things at the last minute. So really, the only question we're gonna wind up having is, do we leave things, are we gonna, what are we gonna do about it? Because I really, I really like the group numbers with the A's on here. Because this gives you information about valence electrons in a way that's super useful for the next unit. But I did not realize or think about the fact that these didn't have any names on them. So this is something that, listen, listening to your classes, we'll have information on that, exactly what we're gonna do about that probably Wednesday. Because we're gonna talk about it Monday night. What's covered during SI sessions? The SI's pick. It's called, so, so basically, so the SI's make their own material. So go to an SI session, find out. The SI's are students who have successfully completed the course. So these are students that have already passed GNCIM with, I think, an A or an A minus. So they're good students. So they are responsible for their own material. They're welcome to always ask us questions, but otherwise, they do their own stuff. So I sometimes will give them advice on things I think are useful, but otherwise, most of our SI's are returning. So they usually have a general idea of what's gonna be helpful for exams. I already mentioned that I would do these in a follow-up video. But, oh my gosh, that's a lot of them. Betcha, that's a lot of chapter 4 stuff that we just haven't covered yet. Is there a specific grading criteria for the short answer questions? I'm also gonna refer you guys back to the fall 2022 exams. Go look at those, go look at, look at those. Look at how we word things. If you have further questions, then ask me. But otherwise, go and look and see what we gave people last year. I think I know what this is about. So we are going to phrase things and refer to an element its neutral ground state over and over and over again. The reason why is because when we talked about, so neutral, neutral just means no charge. So except for ionization energy and electron affinity, that's everything you've been doing all of this time. So that's when we talk about any particular element, and we would say things like, here's its atomic number, and this is the number of protons. And we therefore would know that it also had to have the same number of electrons, that's because it's neutral. So neutral elements is something that we've been assuming this entire time, that it's got the same number of electrons as protons. We're gonna use that for this whole exam. That only difference is gonna be in ionization energy and electron affinity, because that's when we remove electrons or add them. So as that happens, that will change. But otherwise, your whole exam is neutral. So it's just kind of reminds you that that's a true statement. More for us to just be like, nothing exciting is happening, neutral, fine. Ground state's really similar. So keep in mind that when we, I know we said it, but everyone was like, yeah, whatever, that our values of n are 1, 2, 3, all the way to infinity. And I went ahead and drew 1S, 2S. Everybody was like, cool, great, whatever, or you've seen it for the first time, woo, pretty. But regardless, nobody was like, well, I mean, you know, it goes to infinity. So why, why didn't we do like 1S and then like 46S? 46. And then like 983S. Those are values of n. We can have those, but we're pretty much not gonna use those because we're gonna deal in the ground state. So ground state means lowest energy. So ground state is our lowest energy. So when we talk about going from low to high, ground state means we're just gonna go in order. We're gonna start low and go high, and we're not gonna see anything interesting. There are no excited electrons. An excited electron might be in our sub shell 46S. That might be where it is. But we don't have to worry about that when we're in the ground state. An excited state might be all kinds of different places, but ground state is gonna be our lowest energy. So a lot of times, that notion of neutral and ground state is just gonna seem to you like business as normal. But that's what that is, is it's neutral, so protons and electrons are the same. Ground state, lowest energy. Okay, I'm gonna give myself a little check marks for the things I did do. Solve all the end of chapter questions or only the eLearning ones? So my advice is to always start with the ones from eLearning, and because those are the recommended ones. And you, as a human being, have limited time. You need sleep. I know you don't think you do, you need sleep at some point. Then, after you've done those, I would actually go ahead and go to that fall 2022 exam and basically see how you do. Because if you Because if you are just fantastic about doing grams to moles conversions, then you probably don't need to spend your time doing more grams to moles conversions. But if you were like, ionization energy is just really bizarre, or we haven't even covered it yet, then you might spend a little bit of time on that. So start with the ones in e-learning. Check out the fall 2022 exam. I would recommend you just set a timer for 80 minutes and see how you do. And then to basically fill in the gaps. So basically, then if you have time or to fill in things where you had issues. Because there are some things where you're like, ah, I keep getting stuck on this thing, or I could really use some more practice on this. That's where the rest of them come in. Or if you have the free time. But do make sure you take a look at the fall 2022 exam before you do all the end of chapter questions. Alex versus end of chapter for exams. I'm actually gonna say end of chapter. The real reason for that is because you need to see different ways of being asked questions. And end of chapter questions will do that. So end of chapter questions will give you some different ways of asking questions. So I like end of chapter questions for that reason. 1S versus 2S in energy, yes. There is a reason why I keep drawing them where one of these is lower than the other. So the 1S is lower in energy. You can actually put a little energy, little graph on here. And 1S is lower than 2S. So n equals 1 should be lower in energy than n equals 2. The 2S subshell should also be lower in energy than the 2P subshell, as long as there are multiple electrons. So as long as there's multiple electrons, then this is true. If it's hydrogen, if it was a hydrogen atom, then I would actually expect to see 1S, 2S, and on the exact same line, 2P. So one electron. So if it's a one electron system, then all of the subshells in every shell should have the same energy. As long as it's a multi-electron system, you should be split. So actually, I didn't have to even draw that many electrons in there. I just did. But yeah, 1S should be lower in energy than 2S, absolutely. And as long as it's a multi-electron system, which is all of your elements except for hydrogen, 2S should be lower than 2P as well. Is there anything else I can answer really fast? Because we are officially over time. And I don't like to keep our living learning community, folks. Everything else takes longer. Okay, so what is gonna happen? Is if there are more questions that have come in, they will email those to me. Because of our technical difficulties, which magically got solved, not magically, due to the excellent skill of our living learning community folks over there. The beginning of this wound up being separate. So I'm gonna wind up recording a follow-up video that has whatever I've got highlighted. Because I know there were some questions I didn't get to, as well as actually all of the intro stuff that I talked about, but that wound up, I think, getting deleted. But that's okay. Things, things happen. But otherwise, that is gonna be our night for the evening. Good luck, everybody. Remember on the front page of the syllabus, there are office hours all this week from all of your instructors. So do take advantage of all of those. I will be making the recording for these videos, probably some tonight and some tomorrow morning, so that we get this from the living learning community as soon as possible. Anything else for our living learning community, folks, before we say goodnight?
That's all from us, but thank you so, so much to everyone who attended. I hope that it was super, super helpful and you're ready to conquer your first exam. And thank you to Dr. Taylor for being here tonight and helping all of your lovely students and for taking the time out of your day to answer any questions.
Absolutely, absolutely. Have a good night.
Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor.
Fabulous.
Yay. And we're just making sure that any other questions that were left over in the chat will be sent your way. Sorry if there are any repeats that I sent you, if you answered them and they worded them in a different way, but just to make sure that everything is all set.
Yeah. Yeah, no, that is, that is often easier, especially because there, there are times where it looks like it's the same, but it's slightly different. And anyway, just, yeah, that's perfect. I will, I'll take a look at this.
Great, awesome. Thank you so much.
Thanks, you too. Have a good night.
Thank you, you too. So Han, have you got all of the questions before I end the meeting?
Just a minute, I have one last.
You got it.
Yes, I'm done. Thank you.
You got them all?
Yep.
Okay, great. All right, see you guys later.
Thank you so much. Good night.
Thank you.